Good evening. As Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting. All items that will be discussed or voted on this evening has have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the student superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that the proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased you have taken time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
... de educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del diecisiete de septiembre de dos mil veinticuatro. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendent se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como junta de educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendent, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendent. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. Mr. Mills?
With the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of the HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, staff will follow-up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish. Thank you.
Nosotros, la junta de educación, en colaboración con la superintendent y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Our first public comment speaker is Shailene Mulgrave.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Hartford Board of Education. I stand before you tonight not just as a parent, but as an advocate for educational excellence and equity. My name is Shailene Mulgrave, and I am here to address grave concerns regarding the education of my son, Kasim Newton, at Capital Preparatory Magnet School. Let me begin by reminding this Board of Capital Prep's own mission statement. Capital Preparatory Magnet School aspires to create a community of lifelong learners that will provide society with citizens who work towards social justice in a college preparatory environment. The situation I'm about to describe is not just a failure of our school, but a systemic breakdown that demands immediate action from this Board. My son, Kasim, a bright and eager student, currently sits in classrooms without assigned teachers for math, STEM, and English. Let that sink in. Core subjects, the very foundation of education, left without qualified instructors. In some instances, students have been left entirely unsupervised. This is not just unacceptable, it borders on negligence. The repercussions of this staffing crisis are severe and quantifiable. Kasim's grades in the Power School app show failing marks due to incomplete classwork. How can a child complete work for a class that has no teacher? What is the current number of certified teachers employed by our school? What concrete immediate steps are being taken to ensure all classes have qualified instructors? I reached out to the principal, Dr. Ferguson, and Tori Niles, the executive director of school leadership regarding these matters. I'm still waiting for an update. Now let's discuss academic excellence. Kasim consistently outperforms both school and district averages. Yet, instead of nurturing his potential, they're stifling it. I was promised a discussion about placing Kasim in Algebra I and Advanced Freshman English class. What is the outcome of this discussion? The Hartford's district inability to conduct IQ tests does not absolve you of the responsibility to challenge and engage high-achieving students. What specific options are available right now to provide Kasim with a curriculum that matches his abilities and keeps him engaged? Let me be clear. I hold this Board of Education directly responsible for the miseducation of my son. Your actions, or lack thereof, have created an environment where the educational neglect is the norm rather than an exception. This is not just a failure of policy, it's a failure of moral and legal obligation. The eyes of the community are upon you. The future of our children hangs in the balance. It's time for the Board to step up and fulfill its duty to the students of Hartford. Anything less is a dereliction of your responsibilities and a disservice to the children you've sworn to educate. Thank you for your time.
Millie Arciniegas. Millie Arciniegas. Oh, she's gone.
Good evening, Madam Chair and our honorable Board members. My name is Millie Arciniegas, and I am a resident of Hartford and the Executive Director of the Hartford Parent University, where I have been working with the families of Hartford to better understand, for them to better understand how to navigate the school system and learn their rights as parents. I am here today to share with all of you the work Hartford families in partnership with Hartford Public Schools have done together since the year two thousand and seventeen to ensure parent voices were elevated to drive systemic change and create equitable and safe schools for students to achieve academic success. In December of two thousand and sixteen, the Office of Child Advocate submitted an investigative report to then-acting Superintendent Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez citing the school district with the following: "A failure to report or failure to timely report concerns of suspected child abuse or neglect to DCF. Reports depicted serious concerns regarding inadequate education and supervision for children with disabilities, abusive behavior towards young children with disabilities, lack of documentation and reporting regarding the use of physical restraint of children, and associated injuries, and the capacity of the district to supervise and hold employees accountable for child maltreatment and other concerning behaviors." The superintendent shared report findings with families across Hartford via community forums and engaged families during the drafting of the action plan. The action plan addressed all concerns and the culture of schools were positively changing to ensure the safety of all students and everyone was held accountable. This was an example of everyone working together to ensure students felt safe and families regaining trust of district schools. In two thousand and seventeen, the superintendent began the strategic planning process by gathering input from staff, teachers, principals, students, and families. She ran several parent and community forums to ensure their voices were included in the district model of excellence strategic plan. This is another example of transparency and inclusiveness of all to drive system change. In two thousand and eighteen, the district model of excellence was approved by the Board and was implemented during the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year with everyone on deck working collaboratively together to achieve equitable schools for all students. This is an example of what could happen if we concentrate on the work instead of all the negative rhetoric. March two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, COVID began changing the delivery of education to students utilizing technology. We as families preserved, persevered, and continue to adapt to the new way of student learning. I use the examples above to help everyone understand that despite obstacles we as Hartford families have had to experience, we continue to work in collaboration with the superintendent, teachers, and staff to ensure all children are successful. The superintendent has been transparent, collaborative, and has restructured the school system to benefit all students. And for that, we believe we must stay the course and continue to work with Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez to reach our goals, working collaboratively together even if at times we agree to disagree. We need continuity, stability, and a superintendent that we can rely on. That person is Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. Thank you for your consideration.
Evelyns Correa. My name is Evelyns Correa. I'm a former Hartford student, former para educator, and the mother of a para educator who is considering finding a better-paying job. I'm here to discuss simple math and the PCB response under our current superintendent. Under the current administration, spending on instruction grew about five point six percent, while spending on administrative support grew sixty percent. Hartford is a top-heavy district. A top-heavy economy kills the middle class. A top-heavy woman gets back pain. A top-heavy building will collapse. A top-heavy educational system will fail. Let's give kids what they actually need. They need smaller class sizes, well-paid teachers, and para professionals who aren't ready to quit for a better-paying job. They need librarians, art teachers, and everything else that suburban districts offer their students. We can't afford any more contract extensions on bad decisions that are top-heavy. I'm tired of the district playing footsie with the Connecticut General Assembly in the Hartford and the city while Hartford remains underfunded with a record state surplus. Next, under the current administration, they've refused to warn former staff and alumni about the cancer risk and autoimmune diseases after the closure of Clark School and the spent almost a decade engaging in cover-ups. A pending lawsuit for the cleanup of a single school after having the whistle blown shouldn't impede the district from telling people to get screened for cancer. I am angry. I hope I don't have to attend another funeral. I hope one of my friends and family members doesn't have to go through chemo. I hope my children don't lose their father. Tell your staff and alumni to get screened for cancer and pay them what they deserve. And the schools that I'm talking about are Clark, Annie Fisher, MLK, Batchilder, Mary Hooker, and Kinsella. The schools that are currently being evaluated, AI Prince Tech, Quark, Simpson Waverly, Hartford High, Buckley, and Weber. Thank you.
John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished Board members. I'd like to welcome you, as this is our first public meeting in person to the new Board members, I extend a welcome. Everyone needs to just take a deep breath, because this is gonna be a tough night. Just remember why we're here. We are all here because we are public servants of this Hartford community, a very diverse, rich community. And no matter what happens here tonight and throughout the course of this year, we need to keep that as our focus. I believe you all share that same sentiment. So let's talk about some of the positive things first. I would hope that the Legislative Task Force that was initiated is rekindled, because that would address to our parents and to some of the union leaders, because there's a lot of leaders in this room on both sides, that would address our broader issue of funding. Once we address our broader issue of funding through that Legislative Task Force, we can start bringing more funds in to do some of the initiatives that are needed to make wages better, make pay better, and address some of the issues that we have financially. Our youth program, now I'm gonna speak through the lens of the Union President of Operations, Local Five Six Six. Our youth program needs to be streamlined through a quicker, easier process so that we can add more community partners to it, so they have the advantage to grow our children and students into the industrial education and the ability to work with us in the facilities and food service departments so that we're able to give them a different choice or option in terms of being able to have a different outlet when it comes to education, when it comes to the ability to have a job, not only just for the summer but throughout the school year. So we need that streamlined as well. Now, there's some difficulties we still face. We are understaffed like crazy. And a lot of the positions that were cut, and I supplied the chair with a letter, and I hope it was shared with the rest of the Board members, about how deep those cuts went. Those cuts went deeper than, and to remember, some of the Board members who were there, those cuts went deeper than before COVID. So now what we're asking is, we're asking a skeleton crew of people in the facilities department to maintain our schools. God forbid we get into another health crisis. That needs to be addressed. Although I see there were many cuts made to the top-heavy, and we have to be honest here, Hartford has been top-heavy for a long period of time. And everyone saw, I would ask that I be extended an additional three minutes, please. Everyone saw in August, when the news report came out about Hartford being the most expensive city to live in. Now, Dr. Claude Anderson, if you don't know him, please look him up, said, "There's five staples to a thriving community. Education is at the top of that." But with it being so expensive to live in a city like this, that impacts education for our children. Now, a lot of people come to Hartford and they use it as a buffer to build up their resume, and then they make top dollar and then they exit. Let's just be honest. So we've got to start investing in people, not just with all the great credentials and the nice backgrounds, but invest in people who are willing to make a personal investment in this community. Again, we are all servants in the public service field of the students, children, and families of this community. If you're not here for that, then you're not here for the right reasons. So we've got to invest in that type of thinking. Make our dollars be spent in that area for the outsourcing that happens, that we've become so reliant on, especially in facilities. We've got to develop our workers and utilize the internal resources that we have to do this work. No longer can we depend on other companies that are outside or have no personal investment in our community to do the work for us. And if we do have to, while we develop our staff, pick outside resources, then they should be offering job opportunities to our residents and intern and scholarship opportunities to our students. That should be mandatory. If you're going to take millions of dollars and contracts from our city and our taxpayers, because let's be honest here again, most of the salaries and all of the high expenses that we pay here in Hartford come from the homeownership in the city. So if we're going to, if this is going to be the highest-tax city, and we're gonna pay these type of taxes in this city, then the services that we provide our city should benefit those in the city. Now, there's a lot of mixed emotions in this room about what should happen here, and we all have concerns. There's a lot of leaders in here. But there's something that I'd like to say to everyone and just end it by saying this: When you bring, the best way to minimize disagreement is to make sure that all stakeholders are in the room to have a conversation. Everybody is heard, we work together where we can, and we do the best for our city because we are all in the service of the city of Hartford, our students, our families, and the people who live here. Thank you for your time and attention.
Michael Downs.
My name is Michael Downs. I live at seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm here to speak. First, I'd like to say to apologize to the Board on the food service. The service in the parks, food in the parks this summer was not the fault of the Board or the food service, but it was the fault of the mayor. And I will address that at the appropriate forum, and the fault of the director of recreation. Again, I'll address it with him. The board meeting should not be virtual. It could be hybrid, but it should not be virtual. I'm not afraid to come to a meeting in July or August, even if it's hot. I don't mind coming. And I like to face the Board. And there are some people that can come. If you can't come, you get on Zoom, and you can be present that way. But to have the meeting completely on Zoom, first of all, I'm on the telephone, so I only can speak. I can't hear any of the rest of the meeting, so that, and I don't have a copy of the agenda. Although I did get it by email, but it's nicer to have a printed copy. So I'd just like to say that don't be afraid to meet the public in the summer. And as far as the superintendent's contract goes, it's premature to discuss it, because there is a committee formed by the mayor and the State Board of Education and Department of Education with the superintendent as a member to study the budget and finances of the Hartford Public Schools. And we should wait for the results of that study before we address the contract. Also, recently, parents became, I read the paper, who are a little upset about the results of the education of their students. Sixty-five percent of the students in the city of Hartford, the graduate from the high schools in the city of Hartford, are not prepared for gainful employment. We need to bring back vocational technical education. They need machine repair, carpentry, electronics, mechanical drawing, graphic arts. We also need to make sure we have plenty of librarians, music teachers, art teachers, social workers, and special ed teachers. And also, we need extracurricular activities. We don't have enough extracurricular activities or athletics, and effort and money needs to be put into that. With a city that has over a trillion dollars' worth of corporations, we ought to be able to get that money. Thank you.
Hiya, Cynthia Yenney.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board members, the new ones that I haven't met as yet, and the oldest one has been here. Superintendent, hope you're doing well. First, I must say, and I have to, you know, give you a thank you for, you know, your helping me with my son, STEM Day at Sports Science. me with my son STEM Day at Sports Science Academy. I want to thank you for that. I don't think I had actually done that before, so I want to thank you for doing that. So I'm here this evening to talk about a few things that very concerning to me and our residents. As a community leader, a grandparent, I have deep concern about our education system. And how long have I been talking about this? Over 30 years, okay? And seems like nothing changed, and we get smaller and smaller in system. Now, if we're looking to improve our education system, we can't do it by having all our children move into suburban school. You'll never get any better, okay? You need to actually look at what you're doing. And I've been asking for years, let's look at what quality we are providing for our children. All the humanity that we need into a building to keep our resident, our student here as a community, we are dying because our kids doesn't know a community anymore. They're on a bus early morning, gets back late at night, they have no community. So I've asked you over and over, what do we need to do to make this happen, make it better for our parents? So they don't think that the grass is greener over in Simsbury or Avon psychologically, emotionally, to affect these kids, and we should know that. At the state level, you need to let them know, you need funding to make sure you have all the things that you need within your school system to keep our children here, all right? It's important. And as new board members, you really need to seriously look at the quality of the education that our children are getting. Our staffing, look at our staffing, we're losing them by the droves, right? We're not paying them. Okay, they go next door and they're getting a whole lot more. What are we doing to keep our staff in this system? Substitute cannot raise our children, cannot teach our kids, okay? Temporary, a day or two, but don't have them in the classroom for a year or more than two years. We have to change that system, all right? And if we can all come together and work together, we can make things better for our children. Trade, we have too many high schools. We seriously have to look on consolidation, okay? We can't afford these, all these high schools in the system, all right? And board members, I'm hoping that you could sit down and look at it, how many of these schools have two or 300 kids in them? Our high school with low enrollment? We need to do something about that. And I know nobody wants to talk about consolidation, but we are at a point where we're going to need to do something. We can't afford all these buildings that we have open anymore, all right? We don't have enough staff to go around to make sure they're open. As he always says, the library, what are we doing about making sure all our high schools, the three main high schools, Buckley Weaver and Hartford High, has a trade in there? If we can only do that, we can do a lot. We cannot say we graduate 190-something kids from high school, and I don't think 30% of them are going much places. What happened to the rest of the kids? What kind of future are we building for them? We need to do better, and we can do better, okay? And I know we've lost a lot of parents' involvement and stuff like that, but we need to do better and make it better for our kids and their future. Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent. This is my first board meeting that I've attended. Not really sure of the, I didn't know I was assigning my name to speak. I don't know if this is what the Board of Education for Hartford takes care of. I'm a parent with a concern about the transportation system. My daughter goes to the University High School, and the CREG transportation system has been nothing but a nightmare. She just started, so I'm kind of new into this. They, I'm not the only parent with an issue. There's three others that I'm talking to from different areas, and it seems to be the routers that are new. I don't know how the contract is working with CREG transportation. When I'm calling and I said my, there is a bus stop that my apartment complex built for students to be picked up at, you know, right in front of our complex, this is where she should be picked up at, but the transportation system wants her to walk a mile and a half through a parking lot with no overhead lighting to get to a common area bus stop where she's the only student at the bus stop. It makes no sense to me. So I complained about this, and I'm in South Windsor, by the way, I'm sorry, I'm not from Hartford. They changed the bus stop from where she was to one that was a little bit closer, but she had to cross a six-lane road at 6:30 in the morning and at 3:30 in the afternoon to get back to our apartment and to get to the bus. The answers that I was getting from the transportation company was, you're not the only parent with this problem. I also heard most parents just take their kids to school, like that's not an acceptable answer. And like finally, I sent a PDF document with the best route and pictures of the bus stop, and the person I talked to over the phone was like, "This is perfect. We understand now. We're going to send this up. It should get approved." And then like that night, I got a phone call saying, "Sorry, it's not approved. Your daughter still has to get picked up at the same spot." Like I said, if a parent has a concern of where their child is being picked up, their answer should be the only answer. The transportation company should not have any say. The parent should have the final word of where the child gets picked up and dropped off. So I don't know how that is going to be. I know there was a contract coming up for renewal, and I hope we can look at that and figure out a better company to go with or better answers to these problems. Thank you.
Before my time starts, I want to see if it is possible for me to swap my time with Bridget Allison. Is that okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. No worries. My name is Bridget Allison, and I'm a 21-year veteran of Hartford Public High School, and I want to welcome our new board members. I am here tonight to talk about what kids need, and I am going to move the focus away from money for a second, and I want to focus just on some things that are within the power of the people that are sitting in front of me right now. One of the things that our kids need is they need to go to a school that has direction and vision. And we had that for a very brief shining period of time at Hartford High, when we had leadership under Flora Padro for, I think, three and a half, going on four years running. And we started to feel a sense of cohesiveness and community and direction, and unfortunately, we lost that when she chose to leave the district. And putting aside whatever reasons she chose to leave, what is completely under this board and the superintendent's purview is the process for replacing her. And one of the things that our school has sorely been lacking is an understanding of the timeline of this process. And we've not been receiving very good communication on when a replacement is going to be named, and we're suffering from that. Another thing that is within this board and the superintendent's purview is deciding on who that replacement will be. And we hope that it is a person with strong and deep ties to our community, particularly our school, so that we can continue the work that we've already started and get back on the direction that we were so successfully on. The second thing that I would like to bring up is something that is tied with money, but not 100%, and that is that our kids need a classroom with every teacher. We are seeing now the impact that the budget cuts had last year when we were having to cut certain electives, but we're also seeing in this very strange time, a situation where we had budget cuts, but we also have job vacancies that we can't fill. So it's very strange that we're cutting, but we can't fill. And part of the reason that we're having this issue is money, but let's put that aside. Part of the issue is treatment of your staff members. What kids need are staff members who feel valued. Who feel valued, who feel like they're being treated like professionals, who feel like they are part of something bigger than themselves, who are not dispirited. And while that does come from the amount of compensation we receive, it also comes from the policies and procedures under which we operate. And there are a number of decisions that get made that make us feel like we don't matter, that we're not professionals, that we are part of the problem. And some of that stems from our contract. And what is within the purview of this board is ensuring that we have a contract for ourselves and all of the other unions that demonstrates our value as professional employees. I'm a member of the Contract Negotiations Committee, and I can tell you from what I've seen already, that's a problem. I am not feeling like what the district's proposals have said are treating me like a valued professional, and obviously I can't go into detail, but it is something that I hope that when this contract is finalized, you are keeping an eye out on to make sure that we are feeling that support. Because when the staff is taken care of, the kids are taken care of. And that is what kids need. Thank you.
Mike Soucy, did you? Sorry, no.
I didn't know she was right after me, so. My time started when I got up. All right, so, good evening, Madam Superintendent, board members. My name is Mike Soucy, and I am a proud, albeit frustrated, teacher at Hartford Public High School. I am in my fourth year of teaching, and I was one of the teachers that was on the chopping block. I've obviously since been renewed and put into the school that I so love. Even though the budget issue was very frustrating, what is worse is how my school in particular has been treated. In Board of Ed meetings, Hartford High has been lauded, okay? In the June meeting at minute 45, okay, I attended all these meetings, minute 45, Hartford High received a shout-out from the superintendent for having received the highest graduation rate to date. And in the August meeting, at minute 20, Hartford High received a shout-out from also the superintendent for being one of six schools in the whole district to have a lower chronic absenteeism rate prior to COVID. Further empirical data shared with us from the Commissioners Network shows growth on all indicators from the initial audit year through this school year. Many indicators from our Culture and Climate Survey show more favorable views of our school over the past couple of years. However, the actions and inactions from the board have put that growth in danger. Our outgoing principal told her staff in July that she was offered a position closer to home, and she took it. Since her resignation in July, the position has yet to be filled, with no clarification as to who is going to be in charge. We are without a physics teacher for our engineering pathway. We are without a teacher for pre-CNA class for our allied health pathways, putting both in danger. Those have been proven very successful for our students, students who want to be engineers, students who want to be nurses, doctors, they do well in these programs, and not having the staff for that puts that in danger. We also have, so instead of having those teachers, we have hope now in our building. We have Weaver's Hope, we have Weaver's Rise Program, we have Buckley and Weaver's Eye Goals and Step Programs. But at our school, I understand, we understand that we get the short end of the stick. So even though I hear at Board of Ed meetings that we are doing well, from the statistics that are shown, from the stuff that I've seen with my very own eyes, I believe that in your eyes, that you indicate us, that you believe that we are a failure.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Torres, and the Hartford Public School community. My name is Stavridza Terzis, and I am a multilingual teacher in my 10th year, fourth year in Hartford, as well as a licensed social worker outside of schools. I work at a large magnet middle and high school in our city that is an amazing community of students, parents, and staff members. I am also a Hartford resident and a mother of twins who attend Noah Webster. I came to Hartford four years ago after having worked in New York City Public Schools and Nashville, Tennessee Public Schools. The school where I teach is a vibrant community of families and talented teachers, as well as excellent social workers, behavior techs, and other staff members. We care about our students and watch them grow from sixth grade all the way to graduation day. This is the most talented group of colleagues I have ever worked with, and I'm happy to call my school my work home. Last spring's budget cuts have affected our school in devastating ways. Many of my excellent colleagues' positions were cut and vacancies were never filled. Our budget, created by the district, wouldn't allow for it. I started the year flanked by vacant classrooms. Entire wings of our school have been closed off. The district cut our budget so severely that we were unable to staff the classes these children need. As a result, we are starting the year with fewer teachers and huge classes of children who are here to learn. Inevitably, we all know that when you put 28 children in a room together, it is really, really hard to focus. This is detrimental, especially for our most vulnerable populations of English learners and special education students. Teachers are now being asked to do multiple extra coverages per week during their prep times. We cannot afford to give these children the field trips and other learning opportunities that they deserve. It is not what I or any of us signed up for when we came into this profession or made the decision to send our children to this school district. Many of the decisions made about curriculum, staffing, and budgeting have negatively impacted the school's ability to effectively be a competitive option for suburban students who traditionally have come to magnet schools for a different and more inclusive kind of education. By cutting specialty classes and making our school equal through a computer formula for budget creation and stuffing students into packed classrooms, our competitive edge has been eliminated. This will ultimately affect our funding as a magnet school, but more than that, it will mean fewer students will come to our wonderful city for their education. Therefore, I cannot fathom why we are even discussing a contract extension for the superintendent. In any other organization, if the CEO does not perform, they get removed. It is inappropriate to continue to have this type of leadership when we are teaching and learning in these conditions. I implore you to vote no to a contract extension. This type of leadership will have long-term consequences, if continued, for our young people. Once again, please vote no to a contract extension for our current superintendent. We need a fresh start. Thank you.
My name is Josh Blanchfield. I'm a 17-year veteran of Hartford Public Schools and a proud member of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. And I'm also a parent of a high school student at UHSSC. And I'm up here tonight because I wanted to come to the first regular board meeting with the new board to welcome them, but also for two things. As you've heard... As you've heard, the working conditions become the learning conditions of our students. And again and again, as we've seen over the years, through those different mayors, different superintendents, different boards, the working conditions have only worsened. And they're at a critical breaking point right now of completely empty classrooms coupled with layoffs. And so, as we move forward, I want this new board to ask themselves, including tonight, the actions you take, are you benefiting the working conditions of the teachers and staff, which are then worsening the learning conditions of our students? Or are you supporting them as your priority? Because there's a lot of talk about funding, flat funding, but really what this is, is the defunding of education. And we have a sign here that always says, "Fully fund our schools." Our schools, because the bloat outside the schools keeps getting bigger. But the schools are only worsening. And so as a parent, I'm asking you, for every vote, including tonight, this new board, are you defunding our schools? Thank you.
Raquel Barrows?
Hello, everyone, I'm Raquel, resident of Hartford, aunt of an adorable two-year-old in Hartford, and I'm also a teacher at Hartford Public High School, as well as VP of Non-Certified Staff for Hartford Federation of Teachers. Within the IEP, there is a statement known as the Impact Statement, which summarizes how specific academic, social, or communication concerns impacts how, impacts the ability of the students functioning. In the general classroom, sorry, without specialized supports. One of those supports is a special education teacher. Our vacancy in special education stands at seventy-four today, which is about fourteen, about quarter of the vacancies in the district. And this is of grave concern. Students receiving these services are suffering. Teachers who are servicing these students are already stretched thin by doing, because we simply try to do the best that we can, because we care about our students. I am therefore pleading, on behalf of the other special education teachers within the district and for the students who we so dearly love, for us to dig deep and find research-based and effective long-term solutions to fix this problem. And while you seek to find solutions to these problems, I urge you to involve teachers within this process. You'll be very surprised to know the tricks we have in our hats. Furthermore, making decisions with us shows that we do matter. Thank you.
Rashmi Sharma?
Good evening, uh, good evening, Ms. Doris, Dr. Doris, and the board members. My name is Rashmi Sharma. This is my fifth year teaching at Hartford Public High School. I'm a science teacher. In front of me, this, I have my four colleagues who have left Hartford Public High School and gone to other districts, and I wonder why. I am a little concerned. Last year, I was at Hope Academy, which was very good. Means we had smaller class sizes, and we did very good because we had hundred percent graduation rate. But this year, since I was in Hartford Public High School for the first three years, I was very keen to come back to Hartford Public High School because Hope came back to Hartford Public High School. But the thing that concerns me is the big class sizes. I have, in my, at Hartford Public High School, when I teach biology, my class sizes are maxed out at twenty-eight, and I do not have the resources. So I come here to just ask you for more resources. Because at Hope, I had a social worker who could pull the kids out when they were having a hard time. Here, we do not have the resources. So our kids, you know, I have twenty-eight students in my classes with different learning styles and abilities, and I'm unable, even though I want to, give them hundred percent of my attention. And, yes, and I do fill a lot of shoes. I'm a teacher, sometimes I'm their parent, I'm their best friend sometimes, so we do fill a lot of shoes. We are not only just teachers. But like I'm saying, is we just need more resources, and that's about it. Thank you for listening.
Carol Gale?
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent of schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford resident and the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Today's agenda includes a contract extension and goal-setting for the superintendent. Both of these decisions must be in line with what kids need. That starts first and foremost with a teacher in every classroom. Without teachers, there is no education. Therefore, staff retention and recruitment must be the highest priority in every decision being made. In 2022, several unions conducted a survey of HPS employees. This was done as a way to measure the anecdotal stories that unions were hearing across the district of staff feeling overworked, underappreciated, disregarded, and treated as less-than-professionals. Significant results from those surveys were that eighty-two percent of staff saw staff retention as a major issue. This was two years ago. Seventy-eight percent said HPS was on the wrong track, and over seventy percent rated HPS and the superintendent as unfavorable. The anecdotal stories have not decreased, and the numbers regarding staff retention have only increased. Despite the district cutting three hundred eighty-seven positions last spring, three hundred and twenty of which were in the schools, the school year began with three hundred twenty-five certified positions needing to be filled. This high turnover is not what kids need. Staff continue to resign from the district faster than the district can replace them. Seventy-four current vacancies are in special education. Thirty-six are in classroom teachers. HPS cannot continue to accept such turnover as a status quo. Our children are facing an educational crisis by sitting in classrooms with no certified professional teaching them. This is not what kids need. Our students with IEPs face an educational crisis of not receiving the contact hours as prescribed in their individualized education plans. This is not what kids need. Our staff continue to fill holes and are asked to stretch themselves to the point of burnout. This is not what kids need. Staff are looking to this board with hopes for positive change in all these statistics. Those changes must be concrete in terms of working conditions and compensation. What kids need are fully-funded schools. A recent review of the district's finances shows that spending of instruction grew only five point six percent, while spending on administrative support grew sixty percent, and spending on other central services grew forty-six percent. What kids need is for these numbers to be flipped and have more spending going directly to their schools. Yesterday, the district put out a communication that requires all invitations to elected officials to a school be approved by the superintendent. As a social studies teacher, that is appalling. What kids need is to hear multiple perspectives, to see freedom of speech and action, and be exposed to the people like you who make decisions in their communities. Such opportunities should not have to have more barriers placed on them. That is not what our kids need. Positive changes will go a long way to making Hartford Public School staff your ambassadors of all that is great in Hartford, instead of leaving the district due to burnout. Our contract negotiations continue tomorrow evening. Ground rules allow for up to ten observers from each side. This entire board and the superintendent are asked to attend and observe the negotiations to fully understand our classrooms. This is what kids need.
Richard Demay? Richard Demay?
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent. My name is Richard Demay, a proud educator of Hartford Public Schools, and committed to what kids need and what parents want. Members of the Hartford Board of Education, I strongly urge you to consider the following three points as you deliberate on the superintendent's request for a contract extension during our ongoing teacher contract negotiations. Number one, this is a matter of community trust and fairness. At a time when our teachers are fighting for fair compensation and resources, offering an extension to the superintendent of schools undermines community trust. It signals a prioritization of leadership over essential work done by our teachers, who are the backbone of student success and who are committed to what kids need. This is not in the community's best interest and damages morale among educators and families alike. Number two, this is a matter of teacher morale and equity, a word that is often used by our administration. Extending the superintendent's contract now, at this moment, sends the message that leadership is more important than the fair treatment of our students and those of us who actually and directly teach and serve them. This action devalues the hard work of educators and erodes their morale. It's imperative that we stand for social and educational justice, which means elevating the needs of those who directly shape the futures of our students and serving the interests of their families and their communities. Number three, this is a matter of ethical responsibility. The act seeking a contract extension during sensitive negotiations is self-serving and unethical. It creates a power imbalance and undermines the principles of good faith negotiations. This is not only a breach of ethical leadership, but also threatens to weaken the collaborative spirit needed for educational progress in Hartford Public Schools and Hartford's communities. In light of these points, I urge you, the school board, to postpone any discussion of contract extensions until after teacher negotiations have concluded in a fair and just manner. School board members, join us educators and community and families in prioritizing taking care of what kids need before taking care of what the superintendent wants. Thank you.
Raquel Calderon?
Good evening, congratulations on your new role, new Board of Directors, welcome. My name is Raquel Calderon, and I am a substitute teacher for Hartford Schools. And I am here to, to support the teachers. I worked with the teachers for about sixteen years. Oh my goodness, are we going to fax this? And I just wanted to come and, yes. There is someone who said here, "If the teachers are happy, the boys are happy." That's absolutely correct, and I know for a fact. My assistant principal, yes, quit. I mean, she retired. And we were so happy with her because she supported her staff. So if the teachers are not happy, the kids are not happy. So I'm over here to support the teachers and to say that the morale is down. There's not enough teachers and not enough substitutes because they don't want to go to schools that they don't, they don't have enough, enough support. And they are, you know, and then they, sometimes they're using the one-on-one parent to go and substitute, and the kid is left alone, and that's not fair. When you're hired to take care of one kid, you should be with that kid all day. So, the teachers are essential workers, and they offer the guidance and support and advice, helping the students to navigate, you know, not just the school life, but personal challenges too. So they are essential. And if the morale is down, it's not, you know, it's not working. And they're not making enough money, they're quitting, they're quitting. They wanted to say, they told me, you know what, I'm going to go to the suburbs. I'm going to go someplace else. I'm sorry to say, but it's not working. So, I think we should wait to renew the contract. And I, and I am happy that we have new Board of Directors. We cannot be political. We have to fight for the kids. Because the kids are our customers. I mean, we, you know, they are our customers. If they were not here, we would not be here, nobody would be here. And, you know, and the administrators, they get good pay, and the teachers are not getting good pay, the substitutes are not getting good pay, the paraprofessionals are not getting good pay. So we need to start working on that. Thank you.
Marie Mocelli?
Good evening, my name is Marie Mocelli, and I work in Hartford. I'm going to be honest, I was a little hesitant to come and speak tonight, and I haven't spoken in four years since I came to ask for foundation supplies for my virtual students during COVID because I was scolded in a letter, which I believe may have been placed in my file, therefore my hesitation. There are so many issues that can be addressed, but tonight I'd like to focus on teacher vacancies. Hartford Schools definitely have a turnover higher than other urban districts. My school currently has three out of four special education teacher vacancies, among other vacancies, with no applicants in sight. Let's face it, Hartford Schools don't have a good reputation as an employer. Students' needs are not being met, and most importantly, affected families are not being notified that students are not getting their service hours. That's really not fair to the families. I have two students this year that cannot read at all in the fourth grade. They scored zero correct on DIBELS. I personally had two students in my classroom last year that most certainly should have been considered for outplacement, and one fourth-grade student with a medical condition who urinated in his clothing, getting urine on his clothes, chairs, floors, and carpet. In the five years he was at my school, this was never resolved, even though the students and teachers were exposed, after we did the safety video as well, until I began getting ill due to the toxicity and odor and had to consider a medical leave. ill due to the toxicity and odor and had to consider a medical leave. Then he finally started wearing pull-ups after I contacted the nursing director and she forwarded things from there. It's things like this that will cause teachers to seek employment elsewhere. My school pretty much had no middle school teachers last year. No one was teaching. It was just coverage during prep. How those kids are going to make it next year, I'm not sure into the next year. We have lost quite a few teachers to cities like New Britain who have a shorter school day, up to 45 minutes less, like Bristol, unlike Hartford, who has the longest day in the state. Comparable districts are recruiting Hartford teachers because in addition to a shorter day, they offer a much, much better compensation package to school employees, some at $20,000 plus per year. And we're getting that information from people who left and went specifically to New Britain. Our job application platform, platform is Nimble rather than the widely used Apple Tracks. I haven't been able to locate any other districts using this platform, which makes me wonder whose pocket Nimble might be in. Applicants want to use a common, easy platform like Apple Tracks, which can communicate with all Apple Tracks districts in the state, making it much easier for the applicants, applying to multiple districts, but also creating a larger pool of applicants for Hartford. We should consider going back to Apple Tracks to get more applicants in the pipeline. Thank you.
And our last public comment speaker is Cheyenne Williams.
Hello. My name is Cheyenne. I'm a mom with a special needs kid and I just, I don't, I didn't rewrite anything, but I'm just concerned because for summer school, he didn't get his special education hours and other kids at his school as well didn't get his special education hours. And that's concerning because nobody reached out. It wasn't up until I went to the school myself to see what he has been doing because normally there's a communication that I'm always reaching out to the school to find out what he's doing. So on this particular day, I went in, nobody had answers, nobody was there, nobody could show me anything that my son did. So starting in August or September, now the school doesn't have a special education teacher at all. The problem is, nobody communicates this with the parents. Unfortunately, some parents like myself and other parents, we don't consider teachers to be babysitters. I don't know, we do our part and the fact that the school isn't doing their part to help us ensure that our kids are successful is really concerning. And also it's concerning because a parent or a mom with a special needs kid, we already have it hard enough. Our kid isn't any less than anybody else. So the fact that these services that are in their IEP aren't being met and we're not aware of those things, that's a problem. And we're calling the Theresas, we're calling and emailing the Jennifers and all these people that are supposed to help us and point us in the right direction and nobody's helping us, nobody's getting back to us, nobody's reaching out, nobody's telling us where we can go so that our kids don't miss out on the services that they need because they need them. So like a parent like me, my son does therapy outside of school as well. So that goes hand in hand. What he's doing in school, I do at home, they do in therapy. So if it's not being done in school, no one's telling me this, it's not being fulfilled, what do we do? And along with the bus situation, my son, he gets door-to-door, having issues with getting his afternoon bus stop change because I'm at work to his father's house is an issue and everybody's telling me no, or if it's like an after-school program, I'm getting pushed back saying no, when to be quite frank, there, there's no answers, but I don't know or no answer back. So who do we speak to about that if no one knows anything, even if we're in person, we're going down downtown Hartford to try and have meetings with these people and we're getting turned away and say, call a number. I don't want to keep calling a number because nobody's calling me back. That's a dead end for me. I don't want to keep doing that. So that's, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Once again, my name is Joseph Whalen. I really appreciate this. I'm not going to be able to stay. I teach at University of Hartford and I got to go to a class. There's a lot of other problems besides just the bus and I didn't realize this. This is my first Board of Education meeting, like I said. I wish I had prepared a little bit more. I didn't realize that this was the state. I'm a combat veteran, I'm a leader by blood and this seems to be a problem in the, the upper leadership in the school. The teachers are begging for help and I think something really needs to be turned over and done. I don't know how it's going to be done. I wish I could stay longer, but I, I really wish you the best and I hope everybody's, you know, I, I hate saying demands, but it, it's true. Like if the work environment for the employees, for the teachers is not up to par, the kids aren't even going to have a chance to learn. And that's where it begins. Where are the principals of the schools? Where is the upper level of each school? I understand this, the Board of Education is in charge of that, but you guys aren't in every single school. So I think there needs to be a turnover, big time, but thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and now move on to the report of the chair. Did we miss a public comment? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please introduce yourself.
Sorry, I was running around the whole school trying to find.
No, no problem.
I'm so sorry. To just piggyback off of what this gentleman said and also for Cheyenne, our children have went to the same school. I'm a parent, my name is Vanita Jagisun, my child is Chana Nee Wade. She is in second grade at Kinsella Magnet School in Hartford. I am a Hartford resident as well. I have been told by the school, on behalf of the school, to try and speak. They have been contacting the board and contacting different individuals. I guess Teresa is the point of contact, Jennifer as well, and the board as well. I have contacted via phone, voicemail, emails and from last year, Keegan Ward at Kinsella, Kinsella School has retired and her position hasn't been filled from last year's school year, extended hours, which my child has been going to for the summer. And then now it's the fourth week of school. I know the first week was a little hectic, just trying to get adjusted, but now I'm still hearing that there's, in her IEP, it's not being met because there is no special education teacher from grades one to six. And as a concerned parent, I was, it wasn't a problem before because again, there was a teacher that was in, in charge of all of that, but now that she's not there, none of those services are being met. She does need to have hours apart from the classroom. I have been trying to get in touch with everyone. I've, have dead-end phone calls, phone calls, dead-end phone calls, numbers that are not invalid or working. I've called for three weeks straight, voicemails, no one's responded to me or the schools. I'm just a concerned parent, just wanting to get some type of communication as to what is going on with this issue and because my child isn't getting these things met, then I'm, there's others that in the school is not also getting their IEPs met as well. So thank you for your time and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak. We do appreciate your time and your, your energy and all the information that you brought. So I did want to say thank you. And as Mr. Walton said, I do feel like it is time to take a deep breath and now we will go on. I'm sorry, hold on one moment, please.
Ma'am, you who just spoke, can you please give your name to Christina Santiago so that if we need to reach you, we know how to reach you? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the report of the chair. The board and the superintendent met on August 29th to begin setting the groundwork for the strategic planning process. This time was used to talk through the process and begin discussing the various stakeholders we want to engage with during the process. Many of you are sitting here, so please remember that as we go into the strategic planning process. There are a lot of stakeholders in Hartford who we feel are important to be part of this work to ensure voices are heard and included in the plan. While we likely won't have a chance to talk face-to-face with each and every person, we do hope that everyone who would like to participate finds a way to get involved. We will have surveys available online, in-person events to talk directly with individuals and groups, and other opportunities to gather information. The strategic planning process will be launched to the public this week. We look forward to collaborating with the community on this incredibly important work as we set the stage for the future of Hartford Public Schools and the students we will benefit. I also wanted to talk about the Blue Ribbon Commission on Education. This, this commission continues to hold meetings which are live-streamed for the public. The commission's mission is to bring people together for a common cause we can rally, all rally behind, building a school district that meets the needs of our students and educators. The commission is tasked with examining, assessing and making recommendations to improve the educational system in Hartford and ensure every student has access to high-quality education that prepares them for the future. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 8th. Prior meeting materials and recordings, as well as upcoming meeting dates and agendas, can be found at hartfordbluerybden.org. The commission is broken into subcommittees focusing on three major areas: connectedness, school safety and community partnerships, academic programming and processes, and operations and strategic planning. The goal of the commission is to provide recommendations from those areas of focus to the district and other partners by December 2024. I encourage those who are interested in learning more to visit the website and to reach out to the co-chairs, which you'll find online for additional information. With that, are there any questions on the chair's report? Ms. Brody?
Thank you. Not a question, but a comment. A comment on this Blue Ribbon Commission. I just wanted to publicly state that there is not one single, at least involved, community person that understands that this community is plagued with so many issues. So many issues that happen outside of the classroom. We have crime, which causes trauma. So, and we have a, a many, many organizations that deal with that day-to-day. They deal with our youth, they deal with our families. And I attended, I watched online the meeting of the Blue Ribbon Commission. It seemed as if it's like making it up as you go, but maybe someone can get this back to the mayor. He is the convener of this city. All of the resources, all of the agencies, including the school system, he can convene those agencies and through his office, he can make impact on the lives of students outside of the classroom that will impact what goes on in the classroom. So my concern is that this Blue Ribbon Commission is somehow going to tell us what to do. That's concerning. I think it's inappropriate, but if you, if you talk to, if you, if you talk to anybody in this community that is so deep in the work of making this community better, we don't have a convener of those agencies that all play a part in making healthy, whole children. So I think that should be the focus in identity, instead of zoning in on Hartford Public Schools, oh, what are you doing wrong? We're plagued with all the things that children bring to school. So I'm hoping that somewhere in some of those bullets and those focuses of the Blue Ribbon Commission, that a focus is on what a student, the baggage they come into school with, that they should not. They should not witness the things they witness, they internalize that. And let's be honest, we, all of our, all of our staff are not a part of our community, so they don't necessarily understand it. And so they have to break down understanding what a kid comes to school with, how to support them, and kids are not in school more than they're at home. So that's what I hope the focus of this commission is because the mayor, again, is the convener of all things in this city.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Any other discussion? As a reminder, you can find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, student report, all attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. All committee and workshop meetings are live-streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Ms. Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent?
Thank you and good evening. Yes, a reminder that my full report is on Board Docs. And just to kind of forecast moving forward, that my reports will focus on the board workshops. And so next meeting, there will be like a mini review of the board workshop, but for this report, I do want to report on how we're currently trending relative to our chronic absenteeism and then also give just a few more details. I know Chairperson Hockenhall spoke about the strategic planning engagement process, so I'll just give a few additional details for our community as we're looking forward to, to launch and kick off at the end of the week or beginning of next week. And so Ms. Santiago, if you can support with, Ms. Zimmerman, if you can support with our data display, please. Next slide, please. And then next slide, please. One more. So just as a reminder that this is how we ended last year, this has been the progression. And so overall, our chronic absenteeism rate improved 11 percentage points since we had a peak in 21, 22. And we are still about 10 percentage points behind our pre-pandemic level. Clearly, we know that we've seen improvement and yet have a ways to go. And so that's just to kind of ground us in how we ended last year. If we go to the next slide, please, given that we do focus on other student groups as well. The chronic absenteeism rate remains higher amongst our special populations. However, as you can see trends here, each group has experienced reductions of four or more percentage points. And now as we transition into current trends, next two slides, please. So we're now focused on, so these past slides were annual overviews. We're now going to go into where we currently are for the month of September. And so this was as of the end of last week. One more ahead, please. One more, please. Okay, yes, there. Thank you. And so this, you see on the, on the left is the average daily attendance rate trend. However, as we're talking about chronic absenteeism, I want you to direct your attention to the orange bars. And so reminder to our community that chronic absenteeism is when a student misses 10% or more of the school year. And so what we see here is that we are trending almost close to, not yet, right, to 2018, 2019, which was the year that we began to really get at trying to understand the root causes of chronic absenteeism. Nonetheless, we're at 20.8% year-to-date and then as you see, last year, we were almost at 26%. When we look at our grade level distribution for the rates, all grades have reduced chronic absenteeism percentages since last September. So that's also a great trend. One of the trends- One of the trends that I do want to highlight is our kindergarten trend. As you know, that, right, kindergarten kind of becomes the beginning of our opportunity to build those habits of daily attendance and student connectedness. And so seeing that, right, last year, this time, we were at 26% and we're now at 17% is momentum that we want to keep, just like we want to keep the momentum throughout all of our, all of our grades. So now I'll shift to just a few slides that speak to our strategic planning process. All Voices, Our Future. And our chairperson talked about the fact that we came together to begin to think about what that process could look like. And I just want to extend gratitude to the board for the retreat, which mostly focused on the strategic planning and the communications and engagement process. And so the strategic planning process will be collaboratively with our community, charting a course that readies our students, all of our students for the future. And so it is, you know, going to require a focus on equity, bold and innovative thinking, done in collaboration with our schools and their communities. And you see here that it is a focus on developing a comprehensive 10-year vision in a more specific three-to-five-year plan. And so there are phases to this work. The phase zero, which was the planning that we have engaged in, is complete. And now we are shifting into the engagement phase, the first engagement phase, which is engaging our community internally and externally, generating ideas and momentum for the vision. And based on feedback from board members, it is a second engagement phase that we will do so that we can go back out to the community and share what we have heard and the themes and the trends, and then get additional feedback so that by the end of January, the board will hopefully approve not only the vision, but the plan. And just to give a quick glance in the next slide, please, of some of the upcoming events. So we're looking to launch, certainly by the beginning of next week, we will have launch our social media district website, lots of communication, and then begin to do our engagement. And the engagement will be done in partnership with Columbia University's public research and leadership team. In addition, obviously, with all of you all as board members. And so want to encourage the community to continue to stay plugged in. We'll do our best to reach out as we want to hear not only all voices, but all ideas so that we can co-create the strategic planning, the plan, and the work ahead. That concludes my report. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I do have one, one other thing. I just want to, there were two events that I want to highlight that, one in August and one most recently. These have been communications with our faith-based partners, Walk in the Light Church of God Community Conversation, focused on where we were post-COVID, specifically around mental health wellness and supports for our students. And then most recently, Annual Appreciation Sunday at the Pentecostus of Greater Hartford Church. That I just want to extend the gratitude to all of the board members. Board member Ruth Fortune, Francesa, Derristo, Ledger, and Chanté Brody were there. But I did want to extend the gratitude to all of the board members after speaking to the clergy there that extended their gratitude to all of you. So I just wanted to pass that on, say thank you on, on their behalf. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will now move on to the business agenda. Item 4.1, Contract Continuation Approval, Our Piece of the Pie. Motion that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with our piece of the pie for the term outlined in the contract in an amount not to exceed $660,000, ending June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I will give it back to Superintendent.
Yes, and just for some background and context, the Opportunity Academy engages overage, undercredited students in achieving their goals. We've had a, a meeting to review the support, the structure, not only at OPP and, and the academy, but also how it aligns with our continuum of support for students. This is a one-year contract. We have several offices that come together to make sure that academically, socially, emotionally, their program aligns not only with state requirements, but also with our priorities for our students. And in terms of metrics, some of the metrics that we focus on and that the team at OPP focuses on is graduation, chronic absenteeism, and their focus on college and career-based and college and career readiness opportunities. The, the grant, these are general funds and there are, it is a quarterly-based tuition, if you will. And so I will leave it to the team. I will leave the team ready in case there are any questions from the board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions or discussions for my fellow board members?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mills?
Cool, not a question. I just want to thank the organization for all the great work that they do in collaboration with the school system and the city of Hartford. The end.
Anyone else? Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to revisit the data that was shared this week. That has eight students now graduating from Opportunity Academy in 2024. I think at the committee meeting, that number was 12. And your, your service is offered to 75 students. And the other thing that was shown in the data that was presented is it appeared that 40 students withdrew from the program this calendar year. And so can you comment on why the highest draw rate, why the low graduation rate? And as your data showed going out to 2028, it continues to be a low graduation rate?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Walker. So engaging in our conversation that we started a couple of weeks ago, every student at Opportunity Academy comes in with different credit attainments. So although we might have a low class of seniors, there's still individual students matriculating through the, through the credit attainment process. What has happened, what happens with these students is we might receive a 17- or 18-year-old student that might come to Opportunity Academy with no credits. Now, they've already missed the opportunity to garner credits for a two-to-three-year period. So when you look at these students, we can't absolutely classify them as we classify traditional students. Some of these students have to go through a whole educational process in an expedited period of time. And sometimes they come with so many barriers that might overcome their ability to complete. Now, as we also discussed in our workshop, we have to do better with suitability, identification, and making sure that the school is an appropriate educational environment for some of these students. Like I said, also, we discussed, some of these students have been to three, four, in sometime cases, five high schools before we received them. So although our graduating class might be small, that doesn't mean that they don't have matriculating students coming behind them. It's a paced, it's an individually paced environment. And we cannot, we cannot guarantee that they are going to move at the same pace. Every student at Opportunity Academy has an individualized educational journey, plan, and success, hopefully, for most of them.
Yeah, then I just want to say, based on the data that was sent, right, there were no more than 10 students in a year graduating as you were projecting between now and 2028. And so I just want to have it understood here in this space that last year, we approved over half a million dollars for your organization with those types of results. And we're being asked for $660,000 this year. So as I project out to 2028, my mind is saying, okay, I'm thinking that 200, $2.6 million will go into this effort with the outcome of maybe 40 students graduating in that time period. And so I'm just challenging it, the, the, the matriculation I get, right? But that's a very low number for two and a half million dollars. And what was shown is 40 students withdrew this year. And so I kind of want to just have it be known that a lot of students appear to withdraw from the program. And I'm not challenging your passion, your staff, the impossible task that you're under. But I'm just questioning if the structure of the program, as it's currently laid out, really the best, the best use of the resources and the best for these students when eight or 10 graduate, 30 or 40 withdraw?
So I want, I want to, I want to, I want to ensure that everybody understands that the financial agreement encompasses a significant amount of factors. We do not only have support staff that we, that we, that we work with under those funds that we receive from the district. We have educators. We have emergency, emergency response funds. We have workforce dollars. I also want to say that we are deeply committed to these students because these are the students that are often, that often fall off the radar. We're so committed that we do fundraising also for this project. So it's not, to me, investment on these students that typically disconnect and then not to be found. They go through withdrawal process, they give up on education because they haven't been successful. We're, we're not, we're trying to create a culture of, this is a school for this population that should be compared to any other school. What I do ask for support is that collectively, we have to work on who are the right students for Opportunity Academy? And what's the profile should be so that we're, they're successful and we're successful as a partnership on behalf of these students? I think that these, the number of overage, undercredited students are going to get higher. They're not going to get lower. And I think that collectively, we have to build a better quality system from both sides.
Thank you. I, I would agree. And so I would agree. And so what I'm saying is, I would endorse to let's consider a way to go back and restructure this. My concern is, I put money out there. The same result I got this year will be the same result next year and the same result the year after that. Because that's what your data showed. And I'm not blaming it for that because that's what more money says, go do the same thing again. And so what I endorse and what you just said is, let's find a way to maybe go back, rethink about this, let's restructure this. What you're doing is important work. I'm just not sure is, is, as it's structured, if it's really delivering the benefit that we really wanted to deliver for these really, really at-risk students?
We, we, I'll, I'll, I'll finish with this. I consider Hartford Public Schools an incredible partner in this journey. I do agree that we should come together and, and, and make the, the model better. But, but, you know, it should be part of, everything I've heard tonight is about getting better on behalf of young people, right? Our piece of the pie is a fully welcoming and contributing partner to that journey. And I wanted to make sure that the district heard that and the Board of Education heard that.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, actually, not just a nice comment. Is it fair to say that the per-student cost of your program is significantly higher than that of a traditional student by virtue of the resources required to assist your students?
Can you repeat that?
Is it fair to suggest that the per-student cost of your program is higher than that of a traditional student by virtue of the sheer resources that your students require?
I would, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Ms. Brody?
Hello, good evening. I, as was discussed in committee a little bit, I believe the per pupil dollar comes nowhere near the service that's provided. It, it just isn't. And I just wanted to, to ground, at least for all of us, that these literally are the students that nobody wants to deal with. Pretty much everyone has given up on. And this gives them the opportunity to be educated. All of, like, when you, when you go, there, there's always the, the most, like, the most challenged students in schools that no one knows how to reach. They have an entire population of students that's kind of going along with the flow. It might be a little here or there. But these are those students that they are not going to thrive, and they have not thrived. So I appreciate that there is someone that is actually going to, that have been helping these students. And I'll end with someone that I know was at a meeting with a student and how they described what was happening to me. And I don't know who the woman was, but it was, it reminded me of that thing you need that's sometimes is in your home, but then is in school too? On holding the student accountable, not having it. You're going to achieve and pouring that love and that concern in the, in that environment. So I just know of the things that happen just from being, you know, of this, like, community. But I don't think, on paper, the numbers of what is provided, it definitely does not match the amount of resources that go into this program. But I just thank you for willing to, be willing to serve this population of students that nobody, they, they're not going to say it, but nobody wants to deal with. So thank you.
Good evening, Board and Madam Superintendent. My name is Gerard Dawes, OPP. And I just want to bring your attention to the 23 that withdrew without credits last year. On average, the age of those students was 18. And they came in, on average, with nine credits. That meant that they needed 16 credits to graduate within three years. That's a tall task for students who have been to two or three high schools. We did the best we could with those students. We connected those students with services and our other service areas within our organization. So we are happy to say there are a lot of success stories within those students. But they had competing, competing things in their lives where they couldn't meet the obligation of, you know, the credits at, by the age of 21. And the ones who had IEPs, 22. So there are a lot of success stories within those 20, 22 that, 23 that dropped out. But it was a tall task to earn 16 credits for a student that came to us from two or three high schools. And, and me and my partner Liliana, we are working on a better suitability process for students enrolling into Opportunity Academy so we can improve on the outcomes that you just spoke about. So we are working diligently to make sure that we come back with better data next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, question? Mr. Tatum?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for lifting that point up. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Gerard Dawes.
Gerard Dawes. Thank you, thank you for lifting that point up. Although, obviously, graduation and credit attainment is the goal of education. It's how we measure success in a lot of ways. I think it's important, especially for students who... I think it's important, especially for students whose experience is not, is less well-aligned with that traditional system, to think about education a little bit more broadly and not discount the educational value of those conversations and that support that maybe didn't end up with a diploma or a credit. But that kid knew that someone was there for them and was able to coach them through a tough transition in their life perhaps. And, and you know, as you say, uh different challenges and barriers and other priorities in their life might, might in their judgment lead them down a path that doesn't lead to graduation. That, and, and we're looking at systemically how we can do a better job by that so that more and more students do pursue that path and it's accessible to those students. Um, and like the value of a program is not just in its graduation rate, especially in these populations.
Thank you, any further discussion? Oh, yep, uh, Ms. Darastel Ledger?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and thank you, Mr. Dawes, for your explanation with regards to, and clarification with regards to the twenty-three students that um did remove themselves from, from that particular part of the program. So is it safe to say that those, some of those students did, you were able to connect them to other parts of the program so that they could meet success?
Yes, correct, and some of them even connected to other schools, so we do have data um for that as well. But it's just that Opportunity Academy didn't meet their need at the time, yes. And also they connected to other services within our organization, whether that was workforce opportunities, other youth development components, um Hartford Youth Service Corps, um earning wages. Um, so you know, various um programs within our piece of the pie. Every student that comes through from Hartford Public Schools to OA, um Opportunity Academy also becomes a member of um our, our, our piece of the pie and therefore they have access to all of our services.
Thank you so much and I just wanna say once again, thank you for the work that you're doing. You are reaching a population that is, some may say, less desirable, but everyone has a right to learn. Everyone has a right to be educated and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions?
I have two comments, um one in terms of the numbers and I do thank Board uh Member Walker for bringing these to light. I think the presentation of the numbers uh where you tell us the cumulative numbers of students you've served, um for me personally as a new board member is maybe not the presentation that helps me really understand. If contractually, we're paying for seventy-five students, perhaps presenting the numbers in terms of how many students you're touching each quarter will be, help me better understand, it's good to also have the cumulative number, but the per quarter number is also very helpful. Um, so that there's no doubt that there's overpayment or mismanagement of funds. Um, and the second comment is that, yes, I do believe you offer a really valuable service. I think having a district putting funds to s- children, towards children that have been disregarded and to some extent perhaps have failed themselves and the school system has failed them is a, it, it speaks volumes. Um, it, it shouldn't only be that resources allocated towards students who excel, we should put resources towards students who struggle and who need the extra help. Um, and I think your data to, to Board Member Tatum's point should reflect that more so that we better appreciate that. Because I don't want you to think that personally I don't appreciate, I think it's really valuable work. Um, if you can reflect the number of phone calls you do to students. Um, I remember during the committee meeting, someone said the work that you do, it's really hard to see on paper. It's just a feeling in that room, it's, it's this power that you bring, this passion that you bring. The more details you can provide on those touches, if you can have a student come speak with us how you've changed your life, maybe even a student who withdrew from the program but who benefited. I think that will speak volumes because you are dealing with an untraditional population, with an op- a population that's underserved and often overlooked. And the fact that this district is putting money towards those students and not disregarding them does speak volume be, to our values and what we believe that all these students could achieve. Um, and I look forward to getting more reports and, and more details from you in the future.
Any more discussion or question? Mr. Walker?
Yes, since we're making comments, um now the, the focus of my discussion was talk about the structure of Opportunity Academy. I think this population totally needs to be served. Now, as you're structured, you're, we're kinda selling these young people, once again, that somehow we're putting them into some kind of trap where they're gonna somehow end up graduating. What I'm kinda suggesting is to possibly restructure your program, cause that's really what's actually not happening. It sounds like you're touching them, you're re-engaging them, maybe they're getting pushed to some job training, maybe they've been pushed in a way to deal with social emotional issues, maybe a lot of value that you're bringing. But it is not packaged in, in this way of, oh, we're just giving you one more alternate way to graduate. Because look through that, look, seeing it through that lens, it's not a very effective program. And so what, what really, I'm really poking at is that the program potentially should structure itself to be what it really is and help us understand what you really provide, we can value that and call it what it is. I think it's, um, it was said up here that these young people probably have been failed by themselves and maybe by the system. And so maybe in some cases, it's not gonna be that you're gonna graduate in a year or two. But it may well be that we can help you transition to young adult life and move on into adulthood in a way that's successful and you become a productive citizen. If that becomes the goal, maybe it becomes a program we can talk about in a more positive light. So I just wanted to be said that I'm really advocating that we look at ways to restructure this program to have it be what it really is. Thank you.
Um, good afternoon or evening, everyone, my name is Tamika Grant Mack, I'm the School Principal of Opportunity Academy. Um, I wanna take your comment about restructuring um Opportunity Academy. And before I wanna give that light, I just wanna say that at the beginning of the school year last year, as a new principal of the Opportunity Academy, I had all of our students there and I asked staff members, teachers, instructors, other OPP staff to come in and share their path. And we had t- teachers who went immediately from high school, getting their diploma into college. There were others that followed a different worth, work path. Um, we showed them, um, they were actually very surprised that some people took time off, went to work. Uh, some people had families and so I shared this part of the story because every single person in the room, all of the students at Opportunity Academy are there because they do want a diploma. They want to graduate. And so not seeing Opportunity Academy as a, a learning environment that graduates makes me very sad because I'm the one that sits there with students in the interview process and talks to them, you have sixteen credits, but actually you don't need nine credits for, towards graduation. You need twelve credits because you took too many electives, you didn't earn enough. And so I'm having the conversation saying, you're projected to graduate, but miss, I wanna graduate with my graduating class, they're graduating in June. And graduation is their goal and please don't forget that. And although we do provide wraparound services for um the barriers and the trauma that the students have, they don't, they walk through that door because they want a diploma. Now, some of them are not going to get a diploma. We had a young man today that I met with and he's been coming to school the last couple of days and he has four and a half credits. He is twenty. He is not going to reach his graduation credit requirement before he turns twenty-one. And so that conversation that I had with this student and I connected him with, um, he does have um ML um issues and he, he wants to graduate. And we made an appointment with the Greater Hartford Literacy Volunteers to get him into ESL classes that are gonna start on October twenty-first. And then we're going to transition and help him get into adult ed. That person's wants to graduate, so please, as you sit at this table and you think about the students and you think about that we only graduated six and two more from the su- um that summer before, don't dismiss all, and I know many of you are saying, we appreciate what you do, appreciate what you do. But you're looking at the numbers, if you walked into my building, you would know that graduation is on their forefront. That's what they want, otherwise they wouldn't stick it out this long time. There's a banner that I just put up in the be, in the front of the school from last year's graduation with the sign that says, who's next? And when they go to the bathroom, I'm next, miss, I'm gonna be next, they're excited. So take your thoughts and your comments, but re- please remember, don't discount these students just because they are where they're at and behind the eight ball. They want graduation and I wanna give it to them and I hope that this board sees that and wants to give it to them as well. Thank you.
Ms. Fortune?
Just a quick follow-up question, would that student, the twenty-year-old with four and a half credits, would this student make the category of students who withdrew in your data chart?
Not, not yet because it happened today.
Right, but will that be the next chart, will this student be considered someone who withdrew?
He would, yes, he, he is a student that's categorized as withdrew, but we are walking him through each part of the um process into adult education.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Uh, Ms. Prince, what, yeah, sorry, Ms. Darastel Ledger?
Thank you so much, I just have um a comment with regards to process versus product. And as an educator myself, we often look at the process, what's more important, the process or the product? In your case, the product is the diploma. However, the process for some of these students, some of these individuals who walk through your doors is so meaningful, is life-changing, is life-saving. So I'm so glad that you said what you said, I appreciate that because you pretty much painted a picture and gave us a snapshot of what's happening in your program. And I also recall at the committee meeting, you did invite us, um, board members to come and take a walk through your doors and see what work you're doing, so is that invitation still open? Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Alright, thank you from me as well, I've appreciated that the time that you've spent with us. Um, for any public, anyone um watching, please go online, watch the uh Committee of a Whole from earlier this month and also our workshop, there was a great deal of information shared, a lot of data that's been spoke about tonight. So please, please, please go out and watch that, it's very, very informative, so thank you all, I really appreciate it. So the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with our piece of the pie for a term outlined in the contract for an amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty thousand dollars ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes, thank you. Item four point two, resolution, approval of the superintendent's contract extension. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education approve Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez's employment contract for an additional one-year term through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, if you recall, the previous board took a vote and the motion failed, many citing the reason of five new board members coming on the board. And the vote to extend should belong to the new board. We are therefore retaking the vote to extend the superintendent's contract. With that, do I have questions or discussions? And assuming that, um, I, I assume everyone wants to say something, so if someone wants to go first and then we can just go around the room. Anyone want to go first? Mr. Mills?
Oh, right. Okay. So, does microphone work? It doesn't sound like it works, microphone. Okay, I'm speaking. Did anything happen? Okay, excellent, nothing is happening, I'm talking. I'm sorry. I'm gonna use everyone's, it's right here, thank you very much. Okay, much better, I can hear myself, thank you. Uh, sorry, not trying to make a mockery of these proceedings, um but the microphone wanted to silence me. Um, so today, uh, we are asked to decide on the contract extension of Dr. Torres Rodriguez until the end of twenty-twenty-six. I am not going to mislead you, I plan on voting yes, but I want everyone here to know why. Uh, this is not a charge that I take lightly, myself and my fellow board members were sworn in on June eighteenth, almost exactly three months ago. When I was appointed, my biggest goals were and remain twofold. A transparent budget process in which the Hartford School System regularly reports to the residents, the city council, staff and other members of our community in a manner that is easily accessible and understandable to all. And increasing the morale of educators and the retention of the staff that is charged with the education and care of our youth. I'm stating this very clearly and very definitively. I want our educators and staff to know that this board and myself specifically cares about them as individuals, their well-being, their professions, and that we will support them in any way that we can. My mother, Ms. Ramos, worked for the school system as a paraprofessional for twenty-seven years in Hartford High, West Middle and finally at Noah Webster, where she officially retired as of September ninth. And not once was she paid adequately. My sister currently works at Noah Webster. My aunt, Ida Fernandez Ramos, was the vice principal at Hartford High and my younger cousin Isaiah is currently a special ed teacher at Hartford High as well. I routinely talk with my mother, um, other teachers from middle school and high school that currently work for the district. I used to swim at Goodwin Park Swim Team when I was a child and cannot enter a school in Hartford without running into one of my former lifeguards who knew me as a child and still works for the school system. My world is surrounded by educators from staff to paras, to building subs, to custodians, to security guards. I want them and this audience to know that my goal, regardless of who the superintendent is, is that they feel our support. Students feel better supported when educators feel supported as well. However, I was not appointed to make an uninformed decision based on three months of experience in which I do not feel confident in the data that I have been presented. If we do not vote to extend Dr. Torres Rodriguez's contract, she will have less than one year remaining on our contract and would not feel the support of this board throughout the duration of that year. That situation opens up a world of uncertainty that I am not willing to entertain, a world of uncertainty that will be felt by both our educators and our students. This vote to extend the contract with superintendent until twenty-twenty-six should have occurred by October of twenty-twenty-three. And we are currently trying to rectify an error that should never have occurred. The motion before us is not just to extend the contract of the superintendent, but if we vote no, we are voting to start the process of searching for a new superintendent that is ready to start working on July first, twenty-twenty-five, that is less than a year from now. I am not willing to start a process in which we cannot do the due diligence that our people deserve. I have heard from many people over the last few days and indeed, it's impossible for me to ever talk to my family without hearing their opinions on the matter. I take all of that into consideration as well as the data that I do have. I'm voting to extend the contract of the superintendent and I'll work tirelessly with this board and the superintendent who has served our community well to ensure that one of the major goals of this school year and every school year after is the increased morale and retention of the hard-working staff of the Hartford Public School System. If we support our educators, our students will feel that support as well. End.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Ms. Fortune, would you like to go next?
I am going through the public comments um of the eighteen speakers who spoke um during the beginning part of our meeting, uh nineteen speakers actually with a- during the beginning part of our meeting, nineteen speakers actually, with one spontaneous speaker. It's troubling to hear Ms. Mulgree as a parent say that her teacher is without a math, a science, a STEM, and an English teacher in- in their classroom. I hear the teachers, uh, when they say that if they are not supported, students are not supported. I hear the union when they say they want good-faith negotiation. I hear the concerns, I have two children who attend Hartford Public Schools. I also understand that Hartford teachers are paid less relative to their counterparts in other districts. I also understand that Hartford teachers deal with a disproportionately higher number of challenges and barriers that students bring to school with them. I, as a board member, have to think about how many of the challenges that we face as a district, or structural issues that any superintendent will have to deal with, whether or not it's Dr. Torres or someone else, and how many of the challenges are really due to misallocation of resources and mismanagement of resources. It's a tough decision, it's a tough problem to fully comprehend. I'm a new board member, as Mr. Mills said earlier, uh, I was appointed about three months ago. I think change for the sake of change is not enough. Change for the sake of improving our schools and making our schools better is the objective. Therefore, I will vote to extend the superintendent's contract, with the hope that we will continue to work with the superintendent to make sure that Ms. Mulgree's stu- Ms. Ms. Mulgree's child has teachers in the classrooms, with the hope that we will get better funding for Hartford Schools, so that we can pay our teachers more, and with the hope that we will improve morale, because we do deeply value our teachers. With that said, again, I will vote to extend the superintendent's contract, and I do think everyone who brought their concerns and their comments today, I hear you, and I will work tirelessly as a board member to address your concerns and make our schools better for the educators, for the students, and for the- and for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Mr. Tatum?
Thank you, um, I've- I resonate with the challenge of this decision, um, for- from all my fellow board members. Yeah, there's a lot of factors to weigh, and it's a question of- of how you weigh them, in- in- and, uh, especially for the newer board members, you know, I know that there was a feeling of, um, letting the- letting the new board weigh in on this decision back with the last board, and, um, it has, these last three months being on the board, has been a rapid, a rapid lesson in- in how things are on this side of the table. That said, uh, you know, I have appreciated the opportunity that I've had in these three months to establish a working relationship with the current superintendent, and, um, look forward to continuing the efforts that we have on behalf of the district. I believe that she has brought her, and continues to bring, dedication, expertise, um, experience that has served us well. However, um, I have come down on the side of, uh, voting not to extend the superintendent's contract, because of my analysis of some of the particular challenges that we are facing right now as a district, uh, many of- many of which were, um, spoken to at public comment, um, on top of others. Uh, and to me, the the way I weigh the opportunity that change could bring, I think is- is hard to quantify, and- and it's- it's certainly risky, but it i- it feels to me like, um, the opportunities that that change could provide are- are worth the effort and worth the- the risk, especially given the- the sensitive timelines that we're all under. I- I do believe that the staffing shortages that we're seeing are- are at a- a crisis point. My personal experience of being a teacher in Hartford who burned out, uh, maybe that's partly, you know, wh- where- where this challenge is weighing for me, uh, is that I really feel the, I feel what it's like to work in a system where you don't feel much sense of hope that things could be different. I don't, I personally don't, you know, believe that the superintendent is primarily responsible for a lot of those factors, um, and that a lot of this is not personal or even managerial. And regardless of the outcome of this decision, I look forward to being on this board to work with whoever the superintendent is, and all the community partners, and all the staff, on behalf of our students, um, to create that educational experience that they all need. I believe that- that change is what we need, and that one way to usher in that change would be with new leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Heading over to Ms. Brody?
So, when I- I consider a, uh, quite a few factors, I'll, first I'll lead with, there is clearly, um, no more valuable person, probably in the lives of everyone, because we all have teachers, we've all, um, been encouraged, we've all, um, been mentored, we've all, like, hope has been blown into us by, um, teachers. I appreciate, um, to the fullest, the teachers that, um, and leaders that, um, my children have had the opportunity to, um, encounter in Hartford Public Schools, the support they give them while they're in their school, and even the support and the love they show them outside of the school. So, in my time on- on this board, um, I've even been accused of loving teachers maybe too much. With that said, um, I understand, um, the weight of changing a superintendent. Before being on this board, I sat out in that audience more than ten years, I can count, I don't even need one hand to count over those ten-plus years, how many board meetings I actually missed. Because I wanted to be engaged, I wanted to understand, I wanted to, um, give the voice, um, of other parents who just were not present maybe in that setting, um, but their voices, um, deserve, um, to be heard. But, me understanding, and I've nev- nothing here, um, pretty much have ever been personal, but this one is a little personal. Like, personal in a way that I'm considering my child too. That, when you, when you change a superintendent, 'cause let's be honest, if we don't extend tonight, we're not even having a superintendent till June thirtieth. No one's gonna stay and wait to their last day and, um, ride off into a sunset, I wouldn't. And we have no plan, in this moment, for if that happens. No plan whatsoever. And I'll end with the fact that, on any job, even with my child's first summer job, there, she's given an expectation of what, um, is expected of us. We do, with every job, you know what's expected of you, and that's what you're judged by. And this superintendent had an expectation that was agreed upon with board members and herself, and that, um, evaluation was positive. So, for me to sit here, 'cause in any walk of life that we have, it seems kind of crazy that you would get a positive evaluation based on agreed goals, and you are let go. Is- is not, is just not how anything is done to me that makes sense. Um, I don't, I know we're not, um, um, prepared for the instability that follows, um, making, um, that decision this evening, and there's no way that I would put other people's children and mine, um, in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Mr. Wilson?
As a new board member, I think it's, it comes down to a simple, her goals were set by the previous board. We've been here for three months. Those goals were met by the superintendent. I think those goals could have been, had a little bit more teeth to them, to allow us to give a- a more thorough evaluation, um, but that's not the case. So, based on the goals, um, that were set by the previous board and the superintendent, um, and her meeting those goals, um, I don't see a case to, other than to extend her. Now, what that extension looks like is up for debate, how we go about setting her new goals, and, um, so that we can evaluate her in a manner that speaks to what us as a board want to see. Community, and when I say community, it includes teachers, that includes students and parents. We do hear your opinions and what you have to say about the current state of Hartford Public Schools. It does not fall on deaf ears. We need to work together, um, but to do so, we have to put those goals in place. I will be voting in the affirmative of extending her based on what those goals were set by the previous board. I also want to take this opportunity, the strategic planning that we are engaged in now is the process that everyone should be engaged in. We are going to be reaching out to everyone within our community to hear what they have to say, and what they think the direction of our schools should go in, uh, uh, what direction we should go in, and that is very important. We're doing that, not just Hartford Public Schools reaching out to you, but the, us as board members, as a whole, as individuals, to he- hear what you have to say. Um, because that's gonna be very important for how we move forward, regardless of who the superintendent is. And we're not gonna get to where we wanna go if we're not doing it together.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm Ms. Derriselle Ledger.
Thank you so much. So, I think about this, about three months ago, I sat in this seat, and we were prepared to take a vote. I proposed that we table the vote, because I wanted the new board members, incoming board members, to have the opportunity to get to know the superintendent, get to work with the superintendent, learn about, even though it's only been three months, but have an experience and have time on the board, so that they can be part of this decision. And so, it didn't pass. Now, fast forward three months later, we're here. The superintendent had goals that were set, has met those goals. And I also look at, as with Ms. Fortune, I look at the nineteen public comments. I heard the concerns, I heard about all of these things that are happening or that are not happening. However, I think that it's important that we work together, and we use this time, should the superintendent get the extension, we use this time to fix these issues. These issues don't only exist in Hartford Public Schools, but they exist across the state, across the country. As an educator, who's worked in many districts, different districts, including Hartford at one point, it's different when you are in the trenches. There are circumstances, factors that you cannot control. You cannot control students or families who decide to, and this is with no judgment, but you cannot control families who decide to take their children on vacation the first week of school, or the second week of school. Or keep them, you know, families who decide to stay home on their birthdays, or certain cultures that are not recognized by society, um, that would not excuse an absence. So, we need to work on, like I said, fixing these issues, not just these nineteen issues, but many other issues that exist. But, as Ms. Brody said, we do not have a plan in place, should our current superintendent decide to walk away. I'm not willing to take that risk of putting our students, our families, in a state of disarray, where we begin looking for, you know, who can step in? Who do we know? That doesn't work. I also want to talk about briefly, the positive aspects. Like I brought up three months ago, Hartford High has done, there was the- the ribbon-cutting for the Little Owls, Hartford Owls, Little Owls. So, it was a- a childcare center almost, for- for babies, for newborns, of the students who currently attend Hartford Public Schools, so that they can continue to go to school, and get their education while their children are being cared for in a safe space. There have been tragedies, if you will, there have been so many things that have happened, and these are things that the public doesn't have that information, is not privy to that information for confidentiality. However, board members will get those emails. Board members will get those notifications of, "There's something happening, how are we gonna handle this?" Or, "This is how it's being handled." There has been transparency with the superintendent, and that is not always the case in other districts. It's not often the case in with other superintendents. So, I will be voting, as an educator, as a parent of a student who attends Hartford Public Schools, I will be voting to extend the superintendent's contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Derriselle Ledger. Uh, Mr. Walker?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. This is obviously a- a weighty issue, um, somehow I'm feeling a little bit of, um, anxiety myself as I'm listening to my, uh, colleagues. The points that have been made are- are valid. But, um, I've been a board member for two-and-a-half years, and I've worked with superintendent, and I've been looking, uh, for change. When I got on the school board, there were, um, citizens in- in- in my community have been, uh, advocates for change. And so, um, I've been looking for improvements by the superintendent that would- that would show, um, a basis for extending her, uh, forward. And, uh, unfortunately, I've not seen that consistently enough. Uh, it would start with tonight, with the two parents who talked about, um, not hearing responses from, uh, district leadership. That, that the- there's a culture, it seems, where, um, there is a lack of responsiveness, or maybe in some ways, um, a- a lack of- of communication in that kinda way. And it starts with the- the comments you hear from the parents tonight. It- it seems to extend in other situations, I, um, heard of, um, what I'm thinking about are, teachers who are reaching out to school leadership. Um, one teacher talked about not being able to have and really conduct an IEP because, um, uh, district leadership didn't want to chime in because, uh, they did not want, uh, to execute some outplacement for a student. I know a year or so ago, we, we voted for a modern classroom. And then I was surprised to hear from a teacher that the modern classroom that she trained for here, the teacher, didn't get executed because there were some shortcomings in however the technology or the role of the program. And so it didn't get, it didn't happen at her school. So she's doing something else. I didn't hear about that as a board member. I didn't get that information. There was a, an additional, um, situation, where, um, I was hearing about, um, spit staff and staff writing like, like IOUs for service that wasn't provided. And I was somewhat surprised by that and, um, just listened to observe to see what would happen. And we heard tonight some of that feedback of parents who were actually saying their kids didn't get services. And so what I'm voicing is stuff that's been said and expressed that talks about culture within the district. And at some point, I kept moving on as a, as a board member. And what's happened more recently is I'm saying to myself, hmm, maybe I should start actually believing what people are saying. And so what I've looked for is circumstances for which I would see more responsive leadership. Of course, things aren't perfect here in the district. My expectation is that as a district, we own what's not perfect and that we seek to try to work on it. And what I consistently hear is situations where people call and don't get a response. Or this past year, we, we, we celebrated having new, curriculum, went and wisdom and talked to yet another teacher, uh, who was a coach. And the coaches were all trained, they're going to be, they're going to be facilitated to help with wisdom, get rolled out and get teacher deficient this year. But yet through the job cuts, we lost a lot of coaches. And then, um, she was like, well, I'm not sure then how we deliver that capacity building, um, to the teachers. Then on top of that, um, she was training to coach an elementary area. And somehow her new supervisor put her in a higher level school. And so then she went to talk to supervisor and somehow helped the supervisor understand that, hey, you know what? I would actually be beneficial to be back in the environment for which I was trained to be a coach. And somehow what she explained to me is her supervisor kind of heard it and didn't quite respond to it. And so my mind was kind of like, why would good leaders, if given good advice, not follow it? There were openings in both elementary and middle school and maybe high school. And somehow she's now in a position where she's not going to deliver the greatest benefit, uh, for the coaching she, that she, that she had even as a teacher in that whatever teaching environment. And I'm just pointing out, pointing out the point where I'm looking to see, looking to see. When I can hear about leadership was like, yep, they were responsive, yep, they gave me a, a, a reasonable answer. I may not agree with it, but I got a reasonable response. And that's not what I'm hearing. I heard from yet someone else who's, um, speech and language pathologist. We have shortages there and the person that's supervising them doesn't have speech and language pathology background. And I was again saying, well, building the leadership team is one of the superintendent's jobs. Why a speech and language pathologist feeling like they're supervised by somebody who doesn't have the right skillset? Yet I heard from someone who's in world language, who was saying, gee, the world language person who is directing or supervising there, um, doesn't really have a world language background, right? And again, I'm, I'm, I'm asking myself, well, okay. When is it going to change? Will we get leadership that's responsive and, and, and leadership that is really prepared and capable to lead the teachers there in front of? Okay, then I went to, um, program, it was a wonderful program last year and met, um, staff that did great work, only to find out they didn't have a color printer in their school. And these teachers have been, um, using their money to go get color printing. And I was kind of taken aback that, you know, for all the extra money, I didn't understand how a color printer couldn't find its way into a school that needed it. And I can keep going on and on, but I've, but I want to keep driving this point. That what I was looking for is, yeah, signs of change, signs of, of, um, change of leadership culture. And I'm still waiting to see it. I know when I got here as a board member, we invested a ton of money, OTM consultants and other helps. And now what happened, the OTM person, um, is gone. That department was kind of somewhat chopped and cut during the, during the, the, the cuts. And even before then, I didn't, I didn't feel somehow the, um, effectiveness out of OT, OT, OTM for all the money that was put in there. I'm still keep listening because I want to be, I wanted to be clear that, um, of all the things that I would expect to, if we're going to, if, if superintendent is going to be extended, then I want to have on the record all the things I think that we should look at and fix too. Right? Um, because these are all things that are real, stuff that I've heard and kind of just, that's kind of held under my hat. And now I'm realizing it's not going to change if I don't bring it up, if I don't change, if I don't poke it and say, let's look at this and look at the next thing. The other thing is, um, um, I found out through NPR that, um, that High Road School, um, is insufficient. And I was just made to hear it first through NPR. And then to find out through reading the report that, um, superintendent staff leadership found out in twenty twenty-two that High Roads was being investigated by this third-party firm. I would have liked to have been told if we're collaborating that, that investigation, High Roads was, was coming. Because there's some liability there. High Roads has a lot of our children. I had no idea that High Roads didn't have certified teachers until I read this report in twenty twenty-four, right? Maybe if we knew in twenty twenty-two, maybe we could have made some movements or made some adjustments. And so what I'm also saying to, um, the superintendent is, hey, I really want to collaborate, but you have, you got to trust us to tell us stuff ahead of time. Now, this past year, uh, Phil Penn left, the CFO. And I knew we were coming to some financial distress. I thought it would have been a great opportunity to get a CFO. We don't have one today. And now that we're being looked at by the state financially, we're going in there without like the best talent we could have on the table. And that's a leadership decision, who's on the leadership team and how it's constructed. And so, um, this past year, uh, we just had the announced cuts, right? And it was kind of shocking. We said that, uh, one of the things that I thought that would come out of this reduction is that we would somehow end up with fewer staff shortages, right? Somehow, even though we've trimmed the number of staff we need for the district, we're now at a point in the year where we have almost two hundred openings. And you heard from teachers today, they're struggling still with shortages. Now somehow, I don't know who to give responsibility of how we executed that, that, that reduction in force, right? To somehow end up in a situation almost like worse than, than we started last year in terms of shortages, right? So I just wanted to be said that I know the superintendent is doing work and I see the programs, I see the improvements in areas. But I wanted to be pointing out that there's a lot of areas where there's not, there's not improvement in the, and, and there just seems to be at times where people come with ideas that, that they're not heard, they're not said. I know I came here talking about, um, with esports. I brought up, um, reports and studies from esports around, um, video gaming, around screen time. And, and it was taken and, and I kind of got patted on the head, right? But then I found out from talking to someone in the district that we have two different things. Scholastic esports and we have these esports teams. And I've kind of was told off the record that, yeah, your thing has merit, those, that research is kind of okay. And there are things we're doing about it. I didn't hear about that from engagement with the superintendent and leadership team. I didn't know that some of these controls are already put in place and they have some merit, right? And so part of what I'm saying as a school board member is I should be getting one picture of what's happening in the district. It shouldn't be, I got a picture from leadership and y'all are leadership too. And somehow as I talk to teachers and other staff, I get other pictures of what's being said. Last thing, the superintendent said a couple of years ago, I thought that we're going to be a one-on-one district. And I was excited. And so we were going to have, uh, we were talking about technol- technology-enabled education. And so that's one of the reasons we did modern classroom. Now, I found out from talking with leadership that in the past year, you have principals who forbid, who forbade, um, um, laptops and computers from leaving the home room areas. So computers were not moving with students all over the district. And then I found out there was shortages, right? And some people said shortages that maybe impacted some testing. And I know some of this has been fixed, but I didn't hear all of that from leadership. I heard it af- after the fact and then through talking to people and their experiences. And then I looked to see, okay, what's going to happen this year? I found out that tech captains were important to have. Schools still don't have tech captains, all of them don't, right? People don't know who their tech captains are. And so I'm still thinking, mm, some schools are probably still going to struggle with getting their technology laid out. Then I had a conversation with the head of MHIS and she said, oh, well, she got, um, funding and she got three thousand, um, computers that went to our high school students. And that sounded great, terrific, that'll help us out, but I don't know them about our elementary school students. And if we're not going to be one-to-one, then, um, what about technol- technologically-enabled education? Are we going to take advantage of it or not? And I'm okay with that, but let's talk about the new strategy. As far as I know, that's not been brought forth to me that we, that we don't have a one-to-one district. And what the strategy is going to be around not being a one-to-one district. And so I just wanted it to say all those kind of things to say, this is not about personality, it's not about, um, the superintendent and how hard she's working, her team is working. I am saying there's a, a culture within the district where things happen, there seems to be some lack of responsiveness. The school-based experience may be different than portrayed by central office and it ought not be. We're a district that has challenges, we should know what those challenges are and we should work on those challenges. I don't think there's an embarrassment that we have challenges. There is, there is troubling when we wall people over stuff. And challenges really go unmet and they go untackled. And so I'm questioning whether, you know, um, students are being well-served. I want to end with this last one, the graduation rate, okay? Everyone I talked to pokes me about the graduation rate, all right? Superintendent touted it and I mentioned it, people like, eh, nah, 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 nah. And they say it because what they're really saying is there's a general sense out in the community that kids are getting pushed along. And I can't combat that very much because we have a fifty rule in the district that says kids can get fifty if they do no work. And I tried to change that policy and I'm still working to change that policy, but it's been slow, it's in slow roll. If, if we want to say that, hey, kids aren't getting pushed along, then let's have policies to say, no one gets a free ride. Do your work, you get a grade, we'll help you out, but no one gets a free ride. The other thing that I want, that people point out, point out to me is, why do we have graduate rates almost eighty percent when according to our absenteeism, you, you got almost forty percent absenteeism rate for high schools, ninth to twelfth grade. Almost forty percent absenteeism rate, yet people are left to believe that somehow almost eighty percent of a cohort graduated on time. I just wanted to be said that, um, what at least we're feeling is kids are getting passed along, that that's how we're getting there. And as I'm putting on the table, I want to dig at that, I want to look at it and I want to change that perception that kids are getting passed along. I think kids deserve to be educated and get a good education and graduate proud of themselves, right? And not what you heard said out here tonight, that kids are graduating, but they're not ready for the real world. How's that possible then, right? How is it possible? And so the, people are not stupid in the community. They, so I'm, all I'm simply saying is that if, if we're going to say we're going to fix stuff, let's be real about fixing it. And I'll be, I'll join in there. But I just wanted to be said, if I'm voting no on the extension, it's because, um, I can't vote yes and then say, but all this needs to be fixed. Because in some ways, voting yes says what we're currently doing is good enough and let's keep doing that same thing. Sometimes a no says, you know what, we got to redouble, we got to fix some stuff. And I'm looking at people over here because superintendent can't do it by herself, right? It needs to be the entire leadership team and us, okay? My expectation is the superintendent does not leave. But I, but, but everything I said tonight is about, we're going to be doing some fixing this year. And so maybe we come back next year and in a full-throated way, we can say, yeah, let's move forward because there's legitimate actual improvement. Right? Because when I look at the underlying stuff with our, against our alliance districts, we're still lagging. Opportunity districts, we are still lagging in ELA and, and, and S-Back scores. I mean, at some point, if everybody's graduating and we're getting all this improvement, there should be some underlying thing that shows we're actually doing something good and better than our competition. And right now we are not, we are still lagging. I mean, lagging behind East Hartford, right? I'm not to promote Avon and, 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 and Simsbury. And so, um, if we're making statements, um, that is my statement. And thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, today's vote, I would just wanted to say that today's vote is to remain in compliance with the contractual obligations which state that the vote must be taken by the first regular meeting in September. This has been part of the contract every year. Uh, please know that all members of the Board of Education are volunteers. And we are here because we care deeply about the education of all children in Hartford. And as others, others have said tonight, no one here has taken this contract extension lightly. I have had the honor and privilege to speak with many HPS constituents over the past several months. I have spoken with elected officials, school administrators, teachers, students, staff, local nonprofit leaders and parents in support of adults, collectively our HPS community. I have listened with an open mind to all that has been shared. There are many in this community who support the work of the superintendent. There are also many with concerns about the direction of the schools. For those who have, for those who have expressed concerns, know that many of these issues brought forth have various solutions in the works. I have heard what you've had to say and will continue to work with the superintendent to direct, address various concerns. I also want to point out that a majority of the V O E, including myself, right, that has already been spoken tonight. We only have three months of on-the-job experience as Board of Education members and therefore we have so much to learn. We are working tirelessly to get up to speed on all things HPS-related and appreciate those who are meeting with us to help us learn every day. I do not feel this is a rubber stamp board. We are doing the work, we're having conversations and we're making independent, individual decisions based on what we learn. I do encourage my fellow board members to visit schools and talk with administrators, teachers, staff, families in the coming months. As board members, we can visit schools at any time. And according to our bylaws of the board in section nine thirty A, number three, visits to schools, individual board members interested in visiting schools or classrooms will make arrangements for visitations through the administrators of the various schools. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervis- supervisory or administrative purposes. This section then goes on to say, official visits by board members will be conducted only under board authorization and with full knowledge of staff, including superintendent, building administrators and other supervisors. So visiting schools, whether on our own or during a visit with a group, allows us to see students, teachers, staff and administrators in action. These visits allow us to better understand the challenges and opportunities faced each day in our school. These visits allow us to better understand the challenges and opportunities faced each day in our school. I would encourage all members to increase their visits over the next six months and beyond as we work on ongoing evaluation of the superintendent, the strategic plan, and various policy updates and contract approval requests that will come before us. There is no better way to receive information than to independently see what is going on firsthand in our schools. There is a lot to be excited about in the city and the school district. The state is currently doing work around financial management, magnet schools and special education. Mayor Arunan has assembled a group of state and local leaders for the Blue Ribbon Commission on Education, and this board is working on a strategic plan, all work that will require input from many members of our community. And will provide various recommendations within the next six months. Having a leader in place who can take these recommendations and has a willingness to implement meaningful changes is critical. I personally look forward to working with members of our HPS community as we work together to provide our students with the best education possible. Open, ongoing, year-round communication with our community is imperative. School improvement is not limited to what Dr. Torres Rodriguez can do. This work takes all of us working together each and every day to ensure that meaningful improvements are made for our students. Under the superintendent's leadership, we have recently increased graduation rates, formed governance coun- governance councils and improved teacher diversity to highlight a few of the many accomplishments. There is still a lot of work to be done. This work is committed to holding the superintendent accountable to the goals that will be forthcoming and to working with the superintendent to provide support where needed. We look forward to discussing the progress on goals through the year as we hold the superintendent accountable to the work, for the work to be done. Just as Dr. Torres Rodriguez calls out our beautiful and capable students, I believe Dr. Torres Rodriguez is capable of the job set before her. I believe in Hartford Public Schools and the students we serve. And I believe that at this point in time, extending the superintendent's contract is the best course of action. I am therefore in favor of this contract extension. Uh, are there, is there any more discussion or questions or comments? No more? Okay. Um, in order to, I'm sorry, I've lost my place. So the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education approves Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez's employment contract for an additional one-year term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, before voting, can all board members please turn our unmute microphone so that we can ensure we receive everyone's vote tonight? Thank you. Can you get us over there? Are we good? Okay, wonderful. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. We now move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are five point two, approval of phase two construction at Batonsis Learning Lab and five point three, approval of the minutes from, uh, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Uh, item six on the agenda is executive session. Uh, we will be going into executive session to set the superintendent's goal or to work on setting the superintendent's goals for next year per the contract. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Uh, we will be taking into executive session with us Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, Attorney Lori Mizarak and Ms. Christina Santiago. Thank you for joining us tonight. On September seventeenth, Board of Education regular meeting is now adjourned.